Councilman George.
Is that you, Councilman George?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If y'all would mute your cell phones, I mean mute your phones unless you're speaking because we can hear all your talking and echoing.
They ain't gonna be down there, they'll be at the top.
Rusty.
Would you need it?
Rusty.
Now, if you need it, get it.
Rusty?
Yeah.
Can you mute your phone? We can hear your conversation.
It is muted.
I can hear you. No, it's not.
You must have just done it.
No, we can hear you. We can hear your conversation.
I'm just listening to my speaker. I don't have it on my speakerphone.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order tonight, July 5th at 6:30 PM. We'll have the prayer by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson, and the pledge of allegiance by Councilman Dante Elbin. And also, if you'll please silence your phones and any other electronic devices. Please stand.
I have an apology about before tonight. We give you the highest praise, Lord. We thank you for your presence in our lives. God, we ask you to continue to keep your hedge of protection around us, protect this city and its first responders, fire, police, our public work. Father, and also just be with the staff and council tonight as we conduct city business. Just with unity with God and discernment. And God, we thank you most for your son, Jesus Christ, his sacrifice on the cross for our sins. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Ankerson, and thank you, Councilman Elbin. Do we have a motion for the agenda order approval?
Do we have any changes?
There's no changes to move.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilat, a second by Councilman Elbin. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by our city attorney, Mr. Danos.
Yes, Mayor. Negotiate Farmers Market will be July 1st starting at 8:00 AM until 12:00 PM at George Martin City Park. Negotiate Youth Football Camp ages 5 through 12 will be July 21st beginning at 8:30 AM until 11:00 AM at the Goche High School football field. Good Little Express donation station will be July 21st, 22nd, and 23rd from 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM at the Cedar Mall property. Dodging out of summer dodgeball games ages 10 through 16 will be July 27th beginning at 10:00 AM until 12:00 PM at Bayco Park. And Tasty Thursday will be July 28th beginning at 11:00 AM at the Cedar Mall property.
Thank you, Mr. Danos.
Yes, sir.
We don't have a presentation agenda. That brings us to our business agenda. Consideration for an abatement at 3,000 Ladner Road, Goche, Mississippi by our planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. The Code Enforcement Department is requesting a consideration to count for some improvement of abatement for 3,000 Ladner Road for code violations. This has been an open code case since 2018. After the owner deceased, the remaining occupant left rubbish, trash, and debris behind the privacy gate in the back of the property. Specifically, there are hundreds of tires left outside that are posing environmental hazard, causing mosquitoes. Specifically, on May 23rd, 2022, a code enforcement letter was sent to the address on file of Jackson County Tax Assessor about the rubbish, trash, and debris left on the property. The code enforcement office received a response from the owner and previous tenant of the property. We had conversations with both. Neither the owner nor the previous tenant have been financially able to resolve this. The owner recalled code enforcement and stated that he didn't have the funds available to dispose of the tires himself and that he would not be, over the phone conversation, he would not be attending the abatement hearing. The property taxes are current, but the property has been listed for sale with a real estate agent, and the owner is no longer residing in Mississippi. So due to the linked to the code enforcement history on this property and the maintenance of the rubbish, trash, and debris exposing the Goche, the decision has been made to cut and remove all rubbish, trash, and debris from the property and properly dispose of all the debris in accordance with MDQ regulations. Public notice for this property, for this proposed abatement and council hearing is posted and mailed to the owner as required by law. And all reasonable steps have been taken to ensure the property owner has been provided adequate notice that the city Goche intends to end the property and remove any items that detract from the welfare of the neighbors and the other residents on the street. The recommendation from code enforcement is that council approve this abatement for the cutting and removal of the rubbish, trash, and debris from 3,000 Ladner in accordance with the Mississippi Code. If approved, the council may charge the cost of a lien against the property to be collected upon sale of the property or collect the cost through civil proceedings. And they also add $1,500 or 50% to the above collection methods. Of your attachments, I've included pictures of the property and postings and partial information and code case history. I also have Officer Patrick here tonight to answer any questions, and I'll answer any questions again.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments? If you have any public comments, you can come to the podium, state your name, address, and get three minutes.
I'm Victor Sancho, and the owner of the property. I'm no longer living local, I moved to Percy, Massachusetts. So I didn't realize that it happened, the tenant left, he moved away, and then all the tire in the back. And in last March, I came to take a plea from him, and he told me he will remove all the tire in one week. And then I fly back home about a thousand mile away. So until I get letter from Patrick, from the city, for the tire, I went to Patrick's to solve the problem. And I think it's, I don't have time to come back and forth. I work, I need to be qualified to get here, so I make it here today to have a meeting or hearing. And the tire so much, and I didn't realize that it's many tires, so it's going to be too much money for me to handle that. And that's, either I can, if you help me, we go get from the tenant, help me out, or give me more time, and give more time to solve the problem, because I will go back in a couple days, and we have to come back again to solve the problem, and I need more time. And far away, I would have to be qualified to get here, I'm not just coming here anytime, you know? So I would like to ask as much time as I can, so I can come and settle this. But I contacted the agent company called J R M B, who will locate the Goche to transport the tire. So we missed, understood the schedule. I planned to come here to do it today for a couple days, but his schedule until Thursday to be available. So Thursday I had to go back, so the schedule messed up, we missed the scheduling schedule. And I rest in time, you know, can handle the problem. The only thing I can do is I have to come there again and take care of this business.
How much time do you think you need to get it cleared up?
It's not very soon, you know?
Not very soon? That's not acceptable.
I like to go out with the city. How well you can help me to have the tenant, tenant take care of that too also?
We can't do the tenant, you're the property owner.
Yeah, but so many years.
That's a civil suit between you and the tenant, that's a civil suit there. We're dealing with the property owner, who's you the property owner?
How come we did not do it last three, two years ago when the tenant's here?
We did start the proceedings with the tenant and you, is my understanding from the planning director, but the tenant, we can't help that the tenant left and moved out. So basically, it still falls onto the property owner even though the tenant left. We did try to get the tenant to clean up, and the tenant, that's what Mr. Ankerson just read, and in our package, it states the tenant told them he was not going to clean it up, that he did not have the money to clean it up.
Yeah, I cannot come up with the money right now. If you give me more time, I have to go out on that too, because so much tires, it might be a lot of tires. I called Patrick before me to one of the company, pick up a tire, $10 a tire, and that's expensive for me, so I found another one cheaper, a $2.75 tire, but the schedule is not working out. So if I come the next time and look out with him and take care of this, take care of the problem, I don't mean refuse to take care of the problem, I like to solve the problem too.
Well, how long is the time? That's what I'm asking, this is time, are we talking, you know, two weeks, three weeks?
No, it's going to be a longer time, because I don't know if I can ask, request a vacation again for job and within two over time, and prosecute them.
Well, can you get someone to clean it up for you?
I'm sorry?
Can you get someone to clean it up for you, so that you won't have to go all the way, you know, back and forth?
Yeah, but I like to be here to make sure we do a good job. I don't want to trust, I can trust a guy to take care of everything. If he just tell me $10,000, what can I do with that? I have no money. So if I see tires, it's too much money.
That's a mountain of.
Sorry?
Yeah, that's a mountain of tires.
That's why I thought we trust him to go with and tell me $20,000, what can I do with that? Obviously, I didn't get the right job.
Well, like he said, you would have to deal with the tenant on whatever issues y'all have financially, that's between you and the tenant. But what you would have to deal with us on is that we're looking at what the property has on it right now, and getting complaints on it, what it is right now. So we have to deal straight with you, we can't deal with the tenant, because that's somebody that you dealt with. So that's what Councilman College at large was trying to explain to you. So we have to deal directly to you, we can't deal with him. So what you would have to do, after dealing with us, whatever issue y'all have, you gotta deal with that, y'all gotta settle that up. So right now, we need the property cleaned up, because it's been going on since 2018, we've got piles of complaints on it, we don't mind giving you some time, but we need it cleaned. When was he notified? When was he, when were you notified?
About three weeks.
Three?
Four weeks ago.
Four weeks ago? Okay, so he wasn't notified when this, in 2018, or anything? I know you wasn't, he was.
But I can look at the computer, we've had other cases, it's just there wasn't, these tires are behind a huge fence.
Right.
And we've never been behind the fence. The other cases worked for previous tires, but they were all always on the outside of the fence.
Yes, sir.
And they always did, they always complied with what we asked them to do, so those cases were closed. This case is completely different, it's brand new, and it's far worse than we've ever had it.
Right, yes, sir.
So it's just brand new, and that's why.
Did you understand what he said? That we have had other cases with your tenants?
Yes.
But your tenant has always cleaned them up after we stayed on them. But now your tenant's not gone, and that's why we have to notify you, because there's nobody else there to notify.
Yeah, but he notified me four weeks, and...
But it's been there, your tenant's been gone a long time, and that's been an issue.
And I wasn't here to see it, and I expect that he took care of that.
Yeah, what he's saying is he only had four week notice, he only knew of it four weeks.
Can I ask a question? Have you talked to anyone, or tried to find a contractor, or someone to remove those tires?
Yes, I've been talked to a company called J R M B in Goche. I told Patrick that he's a good deal, we have a great, very good, I want to take him. I said appointment already, I text message, I come this week.
But you haven't confirmed anything with anybody yet, right?
I mean, that's it so far.
But is it your intentions to hire someone to remove those tires?
Depending on the cost, right? You told, didn't you say depending on the cost, that you didn't have the money to get it all cleaned up right now?
Right now, right, I don't have the money right now. And so already I had to, it has come here, it's been money applied.
I'm thinking if he gets a contractor and makes an effort, and they start removing them out of there, and you can establish a date with the contractor, he can, and then he comes back to us and reports when he can do it, I mean...
Well, we have the abatement, so we need to, I mean, we could put dates in the abatement, so we still have it, because we noticed it, so we don't have to pay legal notices again that are not cheap.
And he did acknowledge to our code enforcement back on May 31st, asking for a two-month extension. And the response was, it would be up to council's decision.
Which, we're only into one of those months, right?
Right.
Okay, so... I'm just thinking, if he's going to try to hire a contractor to come in here and do that, I think we honestly have to give him some time to do that, because that's a nightmare over there, I agree with everybody.
Well, we've done that. We have done that, but that would be in the abatement.
But, and I understand that, but we got to establish what I would consider a reasonable time for him to come back and report to us and give us a schedule of when it can be done, is what I would say.
Well, even if he don't come to us, if we put in the, whoever makes the motion, if they're going to do the abatement, just put a time he can call in to Patrick.
Well, however he's doing it, I just think we need to establish a schedule of when he should come back to us and tell us what his schedule is to remove those tires. And whether that is acceptable and reasonable to the city council, because everybody knows they ain't going to go away overnight.
Right, but I'm saying that, Josh, am I not correct? We need to, if we do something like that, put it in the motion, because we can't table the abatement.
No.
I think we need to recess the public hearing, since he's got actual notice he was here, or what we've done traditionally is build it into the motion for the abatement.
Yeah, like we get, you know, for code enforcement not to take any action for 60 days, for instance.
Yeah.
Until such time then, so...
But if no action's taken, it's...
He said he wanted 60 days, he's ended him 30. Do we give him another 60? I don't know. I'm just, I'm asking questions here.
Well, I think in 30 days, I think in 30 days, you should be able to contact a contractor, find out the price, get an estimate, and be able to call Patrick or Mr. Ankerson and say, you know, this is what I'm about to do, and then do, take out on your action.
Okay.
Tomorrow I set a appointment, I made a contact, I'll come at 3:30 to estimate, but he gets on the phone and says about $2,000 tire, I wasn't sure that. Tomorrow, 3:30, I meet him, so they can go through and see the estimate, and then maybe get some idea on what the cost is.
So you're going to meet with somebody tomorrow to get...
Tomorrow, that I can talk alone. It's just that we had to make time to get it.
Yeah, an estimate and a time schedule.
Right. Then in August, I had planned to go back in the policy to see my tenant over 10 years, and not, and we can August.
Whenever you establish a price for what you did, then I think you're going to have to do a civil lawsuit, you need to return from your money from your tenant.
I did have one that, I don't have them.
Yeah, we can't help you with that, you'll just have to contact a local attorney and see who might can represent you on collecting that from your tenant, your former tenant.
If you want to go that route.
If you want to go that route.
Do I reference? Do you have reference with...
This is a civil matter between you and the tenant.
We can't help you with that, we're here to get the property cleaned. The thing for us to do is that tonight, I'll get the property cleaned. Do you have any more comments?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So is 30 days fine with you?
This is helpful to me. I can tell my...
Another citizen.
Okay. As long as you can, you know, like, morning, 3:00, noon. At the end of the year, could be good.
The year?
At the end of the year, you know?
That's a long time. That's a long time.
Is that all you, is that all your comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you have a seat, well, if we have any more, we'll ask you in just a moment. Do we have any more comments? Mr. Olson?
You can have a seat.
You can have a seat.
Mark Olson, 2504 Robert Hyrum Drive, Goche. I just hope we complete this abatement expeditiously, as noted in your reports, it's been an ongoing issue, and a significant issue, so...
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Very aware.
Any other citizen comments? Mr. Pink, you can stand up, state your name and who you represent.
I'm kind of an enforcement officer to start the case, I just wanted to make sure, I might have misheard him, but I have a list of contractors ready to go to do this job. I think the issue is he's wanting to come back from the other state to be present when the job is done, and I think that's really what he's wanting to wait on. It's not, we're waiting on the contractors, I've got people ready to go, it's all of them, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pink. Did you understand what he stated? There's multiple contractors that are available to go to work or give you a quote, but you want to be here when they're working. Correct?
But he referred one of the contractors, they cost so much money, so I tried to find one that I can afford.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may clarify, in any instance such as this, when we are asked as the planning department for a list of contractors, we can provide the entire list of our contractors, it's up to the, you know, whoever we're given to choose. We do not recommend contractors, we only give a list of the licensed contractors that are licensed to keep working, so just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Mayor, may I make a suggestion?
Go ahead, Mr. Danos.
I know that we've done a lot of abatements recently, and we've imposed a penalty of either $1,500 or 50% of the cost of abatement.
I noticed here it says whichever is more now.
I have changed the resolution form to whichever is more. You don't, you're not required to impose a penalty, but if you do, it has to be whichever is more, so I think we'll shorten up the motion process. If you want to impose a penalty, you can, it's just going to be by law, whichever is more.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Danos. No public comments, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the abatement at 3,000 Ladner Road, Goche, Mississippi. Code enforcement is to allow 30 days prior to taking action. If at such time that the owner has not coordinated with the planning department, code enforcement of actions be taken on his part, then the city shall commence with the abatement. In addition to the costs of the abatement itself, a penalty shall be incurred as a lien against the property.
And how will it be assessed?
It'll be assessed as a lien, both. Both the actual cost...
Whichever is more, so we'll know that until we do the abatement.
Okay, and you're going to assess it as, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Elbin. Any discussion, starting with word one, Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
All right, you got 30 days to try to get somebody to get it moving, all right?
Is that it?
That's it.
The motion is 30 days?
Okay. Councilman Gilat?
No, I'm good with it, no comment.
Councilman College?
Yes, 30 days. Now, here's the thing is, if you get a contractor lined up within 30 days, and you coordinate with Mr. Ankerson and Mr. Fagan, and they see, they can drive by their see of actions being taken, if you're not here, but if you don't hire a contractor within 30 days to get it moving, then we're going to take actions ourselves. That's all I have.
Councilman Anderson?
Yes, I have a question. Doesn't a person in the business of tire sales and replacing tires, don't they collect a fee for every old tire? They're supposed to cover the cost of disposing of the tires?
They do.
Anyone know that?
Yes, sir, they do. Planning Department...
And the tenant didn't do it.
And the tenant, if he did, he took the money and didn't dispose of them.
Okay, that's all I got.
Okay. Councilman? You know, I echo, you know, and I understand you live out of town, but, you know, we got to think about the people that live next door to the property, the people walking on the sidewalks, the people driving down there, and economic development, and we're trying to recruit that right now, and we're trying to not have belighted properties. I apologize, your tenant was not a good tenant, obviously, and left some of their stuff behind, and that now that's a civil matter for you, but like you heard them say already, if you make an attempt with the contractor and start the process, and let them know, they will work with you. But if you don't make an attempt and start the process, then we will start the process in 30 days. Okay? All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number two, resolution directing the placement of lines on property, liens on properties located in Goche, Mississippi, for fees and charges incurred by the city of Goche to abate the unsafe conditions of vacant structures pursuant to the Mississippi Code Section 21-19-11 by planning director, Mr. Scott Ankerson.
Thank you, Mayor. So this, this list is six properties that the city has completed the abatement process on, we've incurred the fees, and this is simply the county's, the way the county blocked us to give motion to council to, for us to be able to place actual liens on properties, so that's really all this is, it's just for the county to place the liens.
Thank you, Mr. Ankerson. Do we have any public comments? No public comments, do we have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gilat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman College, I mean, Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
We're doing this because the county has requested that we do, just do a resolution so we can place liens?
Yes, sir. So this will allow us to, this is what the county wants us to do, so that they can take action on their side, which is put in the rolls, tell the tax assessor, and then we can get paid.
They just want a resolution by council vote, and so they will know that we're all in favor of.
That's correct, this is...
When we give them a lien, they'll place it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Thank you, Councilman Gilat. Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elbin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George?
Aye.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to business agenda item number three, authorization to advertise for bid... That brings us to business agenda item number three, authorization to advertise for bids on the construction of the Town Commons Park Amphitheater by Ms. Paula Yancy.
Yes, Mayor, this is requesting authorization to go out for bid for the actual construction of the amphitheater only, that is not including anything else in the Town Commons Park. I believe your architect, John Stolarzki, is present to make the presentation to you about the final design, so I'm gonna turn it over to him.
Okay, thank you so much.
Your architect, that's a new one for me. Thank you all very much for having me and for your time. So as Paula said, we are wrapping up the design of the amphitheater project, and to clarify the amphitheater, it's the amphitheater building, but then it also includes the bathroom. So it's all the vertical construction in the project. And then we've actually, we'll have an alternate for two additional restrooms on the north side. Well, just because of our coordination with the concert promoting company that the city is working with, it will suggest that we make sure we have a backup plan to increase those facilities, and if we have the monies, then we'll go ahead and award that. But the project timeline that we have mapped out before you is to advertise on the twenty-eighth of this month, pardon me. Then August fourth, we'll hold a pre-bid meeting on site on September first, and then bid will be open on September fifteenth here at two P M. And then, and you guys will award it on the twentieth of September. That's, I believe that's.
So ours is within budget.
Well, my crystal ball's a little fuzzy lately, but right now, actually, you know, what you, what you saw here, it really doesn't change much from what I presented to you a couple of months back, maybe about six months ago now. It has gotten a little larger with our coordination with the concert promoter, gotten a little taller, just to make sure we have the heights that are required by certain level acts that we're hoping to attract. But other than that, my latest estimate, which I just got from Ms. Paula, she had an estimate last week, but I got some more numbers in, but it's, it's just about, it's three point six five million is what we're looking at. So, but with that, I mean, the, the stage support building, this, this building is about seventy-three hundred square feet now, and then it's twenty-four hundred square foot of restrooms. And then that also includes, in our package, we would actually have the entry plaza with the signage with the city logo.
Does that include the two add alternates, or is that excluding those?
That includes the add-on.
So that includes the add-on, that's okay.
And then follow up, which Mr. Seymour may want to, that's not a motion that's on the table tonight, but then we will follow up quickly. We want to make sure there's a little bit of a gap between our project and basically the remainder of the project, the rest of the site work, just to make sure they get out of the ground first before the site contractor comes in. We just don't want them tripping over each other and messing up work that's already done. So we're gonna work closely together to coordinate that.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor.
Okay, thank you, John. Yes, yes, Mr. Anderson.
Could we get Nathan to hold those up and place the audience and the camera?
Um, it's not Nathan, it's not here, it's John, the architect.
Oh, okay, John, then.
Can you? The camera's up there.
The camera's back towards the audience.
Yeah, can you see it, Councilman Anderson?
You see?
Well, not yet, it's delayed, there, there, there you go, now I can see it.
Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. Okay.
And you?
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Seymour, did you want to say anything?
Just to echo what John said, we've been coordinating for quite a while, and once his structure starts going vertical, we'll be coming right behind it with the thick wall of all, the gray lawn area and the sidewalk. So all the site work will just flow as this project is under construction.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And the landscaping, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to soak in this closure, but I'm still estimating about eighteen-month construction timeline on my project on the vertical construction.
Okay.
He was gonna get asked that a few minutes later. That was my question.
Thank you, John, for that update.
And I got the council.
Okay, any other, do we have any public comments on the presentation?
None.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we authorize to advertise for bids on the construction of the Town Commons Park Amphitheater.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson? Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Galat?
I heard eighteen months?
Yes, sir.
Construction completion?
Yes.
That's in the bid package?
Well, no, we're gonna have the contractors fill in the time. That's my anticipated construction budget. But I mean, my recommendation would be have the contractor fill in the time. Anytime you assign the timeline, they will throw money at it. I don't feel like we actually get our best man, but.
But the bid that we received on two thousand and fifteen will have his timeline date in it, right?
Yes, sir.
Two thousand and fifteen?
I mean, I'm sorry.
September fifteenth?
September. I don't know why I wrote two thousand and fifteen.
Anything else?
I wish this. Go ahead with that.
Councilman Collet?
Two items, first is, so I guess from a legal standpoint, if we have two bidders that are close together, one's timeframe is shorter than the other, or how are we going to determine that fact? Is it gonna be up to our city manager and your discretion on who we feel would be the lowest modified for the timeframe?
Yes, sir, I mean, aside from the alternates, that could be a determining factor as well, but we actually have on our bid form that time is of essence, and it will be considered as part of the decision-making process. So it's clearly stated.
And Ms. Yancy, our city manager, if you could explain to the audience where the funding for this project's coming from, just so everybody's clear?
Yes, sir, I'll try. It's coming from, we have gotten several grants or pots of money from the state bond fund, capital expense fund through the legislature. We also have titans that we've accumulated most recently. We got another two million on capital expense this past legislative session. So this is all basically grant funds for the most part.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Can I piggyback on what Mr. Stolarzki said?
Yeah.
So they, the city manager and architect and engineer will make a recommendation on lowest and best, but ultimately it'll be y'all to make that.
Right. Yeah, we award it, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Danos. Mr. Anderson?
Yes, I'd just like to mention that the lowest bidder's not maybe always the best choice, so I agree with what Adam said.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
John, I thank you and Mark for coming here tonight to present it to us and look forward to receiving the bids and what we're looking at number-wise, and looking forward to the groundbreaking of the project, so thank you. Thank you, Ms. Yancy, also for your updates, we appreciate you. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our business agenda item number four, that is appointment of mayor pro temp for term of office by our councilman-at-large, Mr. Adam College.
Well, I mean, as discussed, when we first take office here, I figured, as we tried to implement last term, was mayor pro temp would be held on an annual basis by whoever council decided was going to be nominated for that position. It has been a year since we've been in office now. Please take this as my resignation from the mayor pro temp position. If you decide to appoint me again, by all means, I'll certainly accept it, but if anybody else wants to be appointed, I'm more than happy with that also.
You're doing such a good job.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, like I said, take this as my resignation from the mayor pro temp position, and I'll leave it up to y'all to nominate the next year's position.
Well, I make a motion to nominate Adam College for mayor pro temp.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Councilman George. Before we have, I mean, Councilman Galat, before we have discussion, though, we did not have citizen comments.
I resemble that.
Do we have?
Are there any other nominations, Mayor?
Well, hold on one sec, let's see if we got any citizen comments.
Okay.
No citizen comments. Okay, so we had a motion and a second, but you're wanting to make, you're wanting to recommend somebody else?
No, I asked, are there any other nominations for anybody to make?
No.
I make a motion that Rusty Anderson.
Well, hold on, we already have a motion and a second, so then we'll have to vote on that, and then we can go to the next, if we're gonna do it that way, so. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Galat?
You do such a good job.
Councilman College? Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
Before I make the motion, or nomination, is Rusty even interested before I move forward with that?
Rusty?
I'd say let's, let's just go with Adam.
Then I rescind my motion.
Councilman Elvin, any?
No comment.
Okay. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Let it be noted, I abstained.
And Councilman College abstained.
Now, this will be for one year, so.
You get your chance next year, Rusty.
Thank you.
Business agenda item number five, approval of the docket of claims. We were all presented them by our city clerk online, attached to the agenda, so everybody's been furnished a copy, us and the public. Any, do we have any public comments? No public comments? Do we have a motion for approval of docket of claims?
I make a motion that we approve the docket of claims provided that all entries there on are true, correct, properly entered, and not fraudulent.
Motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Councilman Galat. Any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Galat?
No.
Councilman College?
No.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. They're approved in one motion unless somebody wants to pull one. Does anybody want to pull one? Okay, one is approval of minutes from recess council meeting held June twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, authorization to accept monetary donations for the City of Goche's Cruising Through the Decades event, approval of a letter of support for Jackson County Pasco River, Jackson County Blue Way Connection Project, authorization to execute a lease for public trust titans as required for the Shepherd State Park Kayak and Boat Launch Project, authorization for the city manager to execute the M G C C rules and regulations pertaining to the use of the college facilities. Form, approval of a settlement, six, approval of a settlement of a disputed claim between the City of Goche and Dolores McFarland and the amount of a hundred and thirty-three dollars. Number seven, approval of water and sewage adjustment dated July fifth and the amount of six thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and thirteen cents. Do we have a motion to approve consent agendas one through seven?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Galat? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Elvin? All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Motion carries. That brings us to our study agenda. Number one, discuss citizen comments. You can come to the podium, state your name, address, and you have three minutes. Do we have any citizen comments? None. That brings us to our council comments. We, it's the first meeting of the month, so we start with Councilman George.
I have no comment.
Thank you, Councilman George. Councilman Jackson?
Yeah, um, I was thinking about these abatements now. I remember recalling that we had a renter one time, and they junkied up the yard and things like that, had a lot of debris, and we fined that renter. So is it possible that that can, and, because this is why I was so, you know, in thought, you know, with this, with that particular case, is it possible that we could do the same? Because the renter is the one that's trashing the place and getting away with it and leaving a mess, and I just think that we, some type of penalty need to be on the person that actually did the mess, because it left the person, another person with a load to carry. So some of these renters are like just, you know, trash the neighborhood, leave and give the waste guy free. So is it possible that that person could be pursued with a penalty?
It can. Well, not in this instance, because your tenant is now absent, but not control the property anymore. So in this instance, when you consider tonight, that would be that. I'm not sure if, I don't think an abatement would be appropriate against a tenant. I don't recall the situation you're talking about, but I know that there's another avenue. You can cite the tenant with a municipal violation and pursue it in city court, and then your city judge can, can take action against him at that point. So that's an avenue to go against the tenant. But I think an abatement is.
It's different. Okay. All right, I have no more to comment.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson. Councilman Galat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
I agree with Councilman Jackson with, you know, it's unfortunate that an owner's getting stuck with this situation here, but I guess at the same time, if he was more involved with the property that he owned and the care and maintenance of it, it may not have gotten to such a drastic condition. Only other item I have is, and got text a couple of times today, we are having another rash of vehicle break-ins in the Hickory Hill area. From all indications, I've been told, it's two juveniles on bicycles with one vehicle falling behind. We could step up patrols, particularly it seems like the Catita, Grandview, Pine, there's several areas right there. Apparently, the two juvenile bicycle is always running to Hickory Hill Villas whenever somebody comes out, so if we can just step up the patrols and maybe try to hide in some of those areas to try to put a tamper on this, it's the situation that seems to just progressively get worse, unfortunately. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman College. Councilman Anderson?
No comment, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Elvin?
I'd like to keep Rico Barazza and Kenny Smith, Donna and her family in prayer. We lost Mr. Smith, he's was a big, I guess, well-known in our community, and I'd like to keep him and his family in prayer. And Rico, I believe, is right now still in the hospital, just keep him in our prayers. Like to thank the city employees for all the work you do, couldn't do it without you. Public safety the last couple of nights with the fireworks and the holidays, yep, y'all I know are busy, and I appreciate what you do, because I know it's kind of hectic. To piggyback off of Adam, in reference to the burglaries, we also have a neighborhood watch tentatively scheduled for the twenty-seventh, and we'll advertise that on social media as well. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin.
Along the lines of break-ins and stuff like that and crime within the city. I'll go back, along the lines of, uh, break-ins and stuff like that in crime within the city. I'm just looking at this Nextdoor app, somebody posted on that the other day, a couple of days ago I read it, where they considering not coming to the city of Goche, cause they considered the crime rate to be high. Is there any way that we could advertise what our crime rate is versus other cities on Goche? Do we know what that is? Does anybody know that?
Ms. Yancy, can you hear that?
How do we stop this of people saying the crime rate is high here? When, I don't think it's as high as other cities, but I could be totally wrong.
Ms. Yancy, did you hear?
Yes, sir, I did hear, and I believe, uh, Chief Bevra for Innocence and Prisics in his PowerPoint, uh, last meeting, um, I'm sure with the equipment that they have, they could come up with some statistics to make a post.
That would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Yancy. Um, first of all, I wanna, um, thank our city staff for, as, for all y'all's hard work. But, um, also, you know, the farmers market's coming up, and I encourage everybody to attend our events because economic development is about community, and developers look at your community um, activities to look at the participation by everybody, from leaders to employees to our citizens, so I wanna remind everybody to please support our community events. Um, also, I would like to thank our city manager for organizing, we had the Mississippi Municipal Conference, and thank the council for attending. It was a great conference, you learned a lot of things, they offer a lot of educational classes. But also, I would like to congratulate Councilman Jackson, he graduated with the advanced part of the municipal league. They got, um, basic, advanced, and professional. Um, so he was at the advanced graduation part, and we, um, congratulate you, Councilman Jackson, for your hard work. And also, thank the Mississippi Municipal League, um, they do a lot for our city, a lot for our public safety, if, um, for the citizens, we are a member of that as a city. Um, but they provide resources to us to partner with other cities, they collect data, they present it to all of us. So it's a good part for our city to be a part of the league, um, and I'm fortunate to be on the board, and once again, thank the city council for y'all's participation, and our, um, sponsors, um, that participated during that. Um, as we've heard about the crime, I wanna remind everybody, we were, like, Ms. Yancy, was provided that we, our crime is down compared to what it used to be. Um, maybe those citizens are just looking at neighborhood apps or something and basing it on just what they see on there, but statistically, as we were presented by our police chief, our crime is down, which is a blessing, but we got to pay attention. I did ask the city manager to look into working with our, um, department at making that presentation like a video with some music that was available to all of our citizens, because I thought it was very knowledgeable and will help educate our, um, citizens on those numbers. Um, I know we had a lot of water, public works, I know it's outworking, but I hope they're taking the time to go look at these flooded areas that are flooding when we have rainstorms just like this, knowing we're in the middle in height of, you know, storm season. So we'll be prepared if one shall come. And that is all I have, and that brings us to our city manager comments. Do you have any, Ms. Yancy?
No, sir, Mayor.
Thank you. That brings us to our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery. Do you have anything? Thank you. Does our deputy clerk, Ms. Cumbus, have anything? Mr. Dickerson?
No.
Okay, that brings us to our city attorney, Mr. Daniels, do you have anything?
I do, Mayor, if we can go into closed session to determine whether a reason for executive exists.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Galat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson. All in favor? Councilman George? Councilman Anderson? Motion carries. We're in closed session. Um, if y'all just wanna step out for a minute, and we'll let y'all know what, if we go into executive.
This won't take too long.